Open a joint public hearing, City Council and the Planning and Zoning Commission, City Council of Pearland for Monday, July the 20th, 2020 at 6:30. We are using the telephonic and not video conferencing as our communication. Open a joint public hearing, City Council and the Planning and Zoning Commission. The call of order and Planning and Zoning Commission. And the City Council, starting with Plan of, uh, I, uh, call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission, starting with the City Council, I will order by Madam Secretary. And Planning and Zoning Commission's of, uh, forum for the Plan, for the City Council meeting. And we need the Planning Commission to do the same. Call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission, starting with the City Council, I will order by Madam Secretary. And, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission's of, uh...
Mayor, this is Commissioner Cade. Uh, Planning and Zoning has a quorum.
And we need the Commission to do the same. That information in the record? Let's move on to item number four, which is introduction of the agenda and format of the hearing. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So for the format of the meeting, uh, there will be a call to order for each item, then staff report, followed by an applicant presentation. Just so happens that because this is a UDC amendment, the staff report and the applicant presentation are both run by staff. So, uh, then we will have public comment, then either support or opposition, uh, where the public has an opportunity to come to the microphone, state their name and address for the record, be brief and to the point within a three-minute timeframe, and then complete the speaker's card for the City Secretary. Then Council, Commission, and staff will have a discussion, followed by an adjournment. Uh, the first reading for this proposed change will be August 10th, and the second reading will be August 24th.
Uh, completes your report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving to item number five. Uh, purpose of the hearing, Chairman of the Planning Commission, Adam, now to Cade.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, purpose of the hearing is, um, amendment to the Unified Development Code, UDC, uh, number T-32, a request of the City of Pearland for proposed amendments to the Unified Development Code regarding the following sections. Number one, removing references to the director of parks within Division Two of Chapter Four and replace it with city manager or their designee. Number two, removing references to the director of engineering and replace with the city engineer and remove references to the director of planning and replace with the director of community development throughout the UDC. Number three, clarifying the language to define the characteristics between a dwelling unit and an accessory residential structure within Chapter Five. Number four, clarifying banner signs regulations by removing the banner permit fee from Section 4.2.5.5(c)(3) point five, removing and adding language to allow banners attached to lighting fixtures in parking areas of sites used as public educational facilities or campuses.
Now completes the purpose of the meeting?
Language to allow banners attached to lighting fixtures in park... Mayor, that's all I can see. I'm looking at my agenda as well.
That sounds like this, uh-huh.
Yes, that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, moving to item number six, application information, case summary. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so what we have is a set of five amendments, uh, for the development code, and I will briefly address each one of them. Uh, the first, as discussed, is removing references to the director of parks for Article Two of Chapter Four. I have been replaced that with the city manager or their designee. Uh, essentially what this portion of Chapter Four is related to, uh, discussing is landscaping and tree mitigation, uh, and as those responsibilities have kind of shifted, uh, into more of the, uh, broader scope than just the, uh, director of parks, uh, that's why it's being requested to move to, uh, city manager or their designee. Uh, number two, uh, this is cleaning up references to director of engineering and director of planning. Uh, those titles have changed over the years to city engineer and director of community development. Uh, number three, uh, this amendment, uh, would add some language to the definition of a single-family dwelling. Uh, this would go on to, uh, describe what is dwell, the three characteristics of a dwelling, uh, being that it has a living area, a place to prepare food, and a restroom. Uh, this would help, uh, clarify and, uh, provide staff a better ability to define what is an accessory residential structure, because an accessory residential structure, uh, does not contain all three parts, uh, to a dwelling unit. So, for instance, it would be something like a pool house or an outdoor kitchen or garage, uh, which may have two out of the three, uh, characteristics, but does not have all three, thus making for a separate dwelling unit. Uh, number four, uh, this, uh, would take care of a fee, uh, that has been living within the development code, uh, that should be living within the separate, um, approved development fee schedule. And then number five, uh, this is a request, uh, to add some language, uh, to allow banners, uh, attached to lighting fixtures within parking areas, uh, used for public education facilities or campuses. Uh, staff is recommending, uh, that the maximum size be 28 inches by 72 inches, uh, that signs would be, uh, at a minimum, uh, eight-foot clearance from the ground, and that you could have two signs per pole, so one on either side of the pole, uh, and that it would be limited to parking areas and not driveways or along, uh, private roadways, and that there would be a maximum of four, uh, poles per acre of property. Um, so this would, uh, allow for some additional signage within the city. Uh, this completes our staff report.
Okay, moving to item B, applicant, is the applicant here tonight? Would you like to make a presentation?
Uh, staff with the applicant, Mayor.
Okay, you are the applicant. Okay, you had further comments to make as a applicant presentation?
No, sir.
Good, did good work. And, uh, wrap this up, uh, would you, item C, which is staff wrap-up?
Staff has nothing additional to say, sir.
Okay. Moving to item number seven, persons to wish to speak for or against the proposed request. I'll thank Councilmember Little, it's not here, is he? Hearing none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to, is that a, speak for or against this proposed request? Would you identify yourself and proceed?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I saw the list and, uh, I did not see that anyone had signed up to speak for the item.
Okay, you will, they will speak?
No, Ma- Mayor, this is Lawrence over in the legal department. Uh, we don't recall saying, neither Martin or I saw anybody sign up to speak about this item. Nobody signed up to speak, so there are no citizens to be heard.
Good. Moving to item number eight, this is an opportunity for the City Council and the Planning Commission and the staff to make some final comments and, uh, final statements. It's called the Council Planning Commission and Staff Discussion. And starting with the City Council, uh, is Councilmember Longo here? You have any comments?
I have nothing at this time, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Carbone, comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I didn't realize we're having, uh, UDC amendment coming back so soon. There was some issue or discussion around screening or, or the wall requirements for dumpster enclosures, um, that kind of bubbled up with one of the churches. Is that something that we need to clarify in the UDC or, uh, or, or were we able to solve that issue at the staff level?
Councilmember Carbone, we were able to solve that at the staff level.
Okay, very good. No, that's all I had, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, next one, Hernandez?
Um, just on number five, um, so this is only, with regard to public educational facilities or campuses, what, what is the, I guess, current, um, language for just regular businesses, parking lots, things like that? Is that something that's separate?
Uh, so the, the banners are typically only allowed to be attached to a building facade, uh, so this was specifically requested for, uh, campuses.
So for, uh, any other, I guess, entity in the city, they could only attach it to the building itself. Is this something that, um, the, I guess, now that this is out there, maybe, you know, the chamber might come back and say, is this possible for businesses? Is there some reason why this wouldn't be applicable to businesses? I mean, uh, even if it was maybe a little bit more restrained than this, but just as an opportunity to give them more visibility?
I think, uh, we would be open to hearing those discussions, uh, when the request is made.
Okay, well, I don't want to hold this up. I was just curious on that front, um, so I've got nothing further. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Moore, I meant...
Uh, Mayor.
Councilmember Perez?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, um, I want to go over a couple of things. Uh, one on the, um, uh, the dwelling unit, um, definition with respect to, um, a mother-in-law suite or a guest house. So, um, specifically, what is, what would, what would a guest house have to eliminate in, in order to be able to qualify as accessory structure? Would, would they just not, if they just didn't put in a range, is that, is that qualified?
So, that has been, uh, staff's interpretation for a few years. Uh, we have been challenged under it a few times and requested to define it further, uh, but yes, the removal of the range and allowing a kitchenette, uh, which is typically a, a white bar, uh, that doesn't have a full capability to, uh, cook a meal, uh, outside of a microwave, um, that has been our, uh, staff level interpretation.
And, and the, the purpose of this is to prevent somebody from having, um, prevent somebody from having a facility, um, that, uh, that they can rent out on their own personal property, correct?
The purpose is to not allow someone to create a second dwelling on the property, which would be in violation of the single-family residential, uh, zoning district that most single-family dwellings are located in.
Okay, so what, uh, I mean, essentially what the way this, uh, historically, the way this started was, um, we wanted to be able to, um, allow people to have a mother-in-law suite or a guest house, but prevent them from being able to rent it out as an occupancy for somebody that is not related to them or is not a guest of their house, correct?
Correct, and this doesn't change the guest quarter or the caretaker, uh, which has a separate definition to it. This is strictly for what, what are the parts of a, what are the parts that define a single-family dwelling, and then how are those different from an accessory residential structure?
Well, what's the definition of a, of a, um, a guest quarter or a, um, uh, I'm sorry to not forget the term that you used.
So, a, let me pull it up real quick. A single-family dwelling is currently defined as a residential building other than a mobile home designed for occupancy by one or, one family or individual, whereas an accessory Uh, it is defined as a subordinate building that is either detached from or attached by only a breezeway to the primary onsite structure that is clearly incidental and secondary to the permitted onsite use, and which does not change the character, therefore including but not limited to garages, bathhouses, green homes, uh, barns, tool sheds, or swimming pools.
Okay, so, um, just, I, I just feel like we're, I don't know, uh, it feels kind of bureaucratic to say, yeah, you can have a mother-in-law suite, but you can't have a, but you can't cook your own stuff, um, or you have to, you, you can say that there's an accessory structure or a guest suite, but, you know, they can only have a microwave, they can't have a range, or if they have a range, they can't have a bathroom. Um, I, and I understand the purposefulness of it, but I guess maybe as a council and a PMZ, we need to discuss, do, do we think that that's, that would be an important problem, uh, um, so ubiquitous throughout the city that we really need to have a policy for this? Uh, my personal opinion is not. Uh, I don't, look, if I had put a mother-in-law suite in there, I'm not renting to anybody. Uh, I don't know a whole lot of mother-in-law suites that are in the city of Pearland, I imagine it's a very small number with respect to the number of residents. So, are we really needing to, um, are we really needing to have a policy that, that addresses this? Um, certainly, we need to have, we need to come up with something so we don't have people who are developing multi-family, um, projects within, um, uh, within single-family, uh, but, you know, maybe there's something that we can, uh, due to... but, you know, maybe there's something that we can, uh, do to, to better define this, you know, make it, make it us, uh, ensure that the facility is much smaller than the main residence, uh, like, let it not be more than, you know, 25% of the total square footage of the residency, but not really get into what qualifies as a range, um, you know, or two out of three, uh, different qualifiers. Um, I'll, I'll support this for now, but I think there's probably, uh, well, if there's any other council members that kind of share that this may be a little bit, uh, overly bureaucratic, um, then, you know, I'd certainly support further discussion, but, um, I think we're just, I think we're tightening the screws a little too tight for something that probably rarely.
I, I would tend to agree with that, maybe we can bring the fact that I intend the item to, um, discuss.
I tell you what, uh, staff, maybe, uh, all right. If staff can just follow up, uh, if, assuming this passes, if staff can follow up and just give us, you know, the number of facilities that we're aware of, that we've permitted of the last, you know, however long, um, that have, um, uh, secondary, uh, secondary structures that are livable, mother-in-law suites, guest house, stuff like that, let's see how rampant a problem it is, you know, we got five or 6,000 of them, then yeah, maybe we need to have a policy. If we have like 10 of them, then do we really need to have a policy for this? Um, the other one on the banners, um, I think we've discussed this in the past, I have no problem with, uh, allowing the educational facilities to, uh, to put in temporary banners, um, but, uh, what is, uh, what's the current prohibition about temporary banners for advertisement, uh, particularly across right-of-way? I know other cities, uh, as well as us in the past, have allowed banners to remind people to vote, or if a charity is doing a particular event, to be able to string something across the street, um, you know, the, the Lions Club is going to do a, um, you know, they have their casino night, or their, their gun raffle, or the YMCA is going to do their, um, um, uh, their fall event, uh, you know, that they have the opportunity, a charitable organization has opportunity to advertise that, um, is, is that something that we can address in this banner policy?
I think we can bring that back at a future, uh, I think with the way that the, uh, the specificity that it was written, uh, you know, this UDC amendment was only written for, um, attaching to light fixtures, um, but I will certainly take legal's advice on whether or not that's something that we can, uh, address currently.
Yeah, it turned out, uh, three or four years ago, we used to do that, and then it, it stopped, so I, I don't know, um, maybe that's a future agenda item that we talk about on how to, uh, bring that back.
Uh, yeah, Martin, I think, I don't want to, I don't want to kind of paint you in a corner, but I think since we're discussing the banner policy, I know this is something that's been brought up in the past, but probably only, uh, conversationally, not, no, not, not a, uh, uh, an official request, so I'd like to kind of officially request that we, uh, we have a future amendment or discussion item where we can, uh, we can allow at very least nonprofits or charitable organizations to be able to advertise banner, have temporary banners, uh, within the public right-of-way, um, and, and develop a policy where we're allowing, or supporting or providing banners in our public right-of-way to remind people to vote. Um, that happens a lot of small towns, I know we're not really a small town anymore, but, um, you know, if we, uh, if we do that, we can, we can continue to encourage people or engage in, um, uh, in their government, I think that's, uh, that's a good policy for us to have. Other than that, I have no objections.
Uh, Member Perez, if I could follow up on both the issues that you, uh, asked questions about, uh, sorry, this is Lawrence over in the legal department.
I see.
Not everybody has access to the video showing at the same time, so I'd like to identify myself. So, um, first in regards to the guest quarters, um, I, I wanted to say that coming back and saying, here's a number of people who have guest quarters might not be indicative of whether it's a problem or not, simply because some of the less dense zoning districts actually allow for mother-in-law suites or for guest residences on that property. So if you're looking at an R1 and greater, um, it wouldn't be a zoning violation. Uh, the other thing that I would say is that, um, as you alluded to, uh, what happens is sometimes somebody might have something for mother-in-law suite, uh, and then whatever the relative was who was living there ends up moving out for whatever reason, and then the person tries to list it on Airbnb, rent it out, and turn it into something other than a single-family dwelling unit. Um, clearly at that point, they're using it as rental income, and more importantly, um, especially on the more dense areas, you might have somebody who just doesn't have enough parking, and before they took care of a loved one there, but now, you know, you have a whole family trying to move in, um, inside that, whatever that accessory structure was, and, and, uh, I think that that's part of the impetus of trying to, you know, when, when staff was looking at it, it's because we get a lot of either complaints, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say a lot, we get complaints that somebody has done it, or people saying that somebody's trying to do it, and then we go in and we educate whoever the property owner is, um, and, uh, I, I'd like to say that we get, um, compliance at that point, except for the people who challenge what makes a residence, well, I don't have a bed in it, well, you can move a bed in it tomorrow if it's a living room, or, or whatever it might be, so that's why we're trying to, or that's why staff was trying to say, well, here are the three components, um, this is what makes it a dwelling or, or a secondary unit, and it's to a- avoid those types of complaints in the future.
Yeah, I, I get that, and, and maybe I'm, um, feigning a little more ignorance than I actually have, I know that this has been, uh, something that's been discussed for a while. Um, I, I've always felt, um, that this is trying to attack a problem with a, uh, end-around solution, we don't want people rent, but we don't legalize people renting a secondary unit in, uh, on the property. I think if we have a law that says you cannot rent a second unit of a property, then that tackles a big concern, if we say, look, if you're going to build a secondary livable space for a guest or a, um, um, or for a mother-in-law suite, then you, we had, we, we would require you to add an additional parking to the two minimal parking spaces that you already ha- uh, you already required to have, uh, for a, um, uh, for a single-family residential, uh, facility. I, I think that more directly tackles the problem that we're trying to address than try, trying to get used planning to enforce something that which is really kind of a, um, more of a code enforcement issue. Uh, we're having planning trying to prevent it in the development stage by saying, don't put a range in there, which is hard to communicate to somebody who just wants to put in a guest suite so they can have their, uh, in-laws come visit them, uh, three or four times a year and ha- and not actually have them in their, in their house, uh, which I think is probably not all that uncommon, uh, than, uh, than dealing with, um, how do we prevent somebody from being able to create a, a rental, uh, development? And we've had, we have maybe a similar plan, transition to people who are, uh, using their homes as, uh, a house has to be a house, but we enforce it through code enforcement, if they're, if we got, if we got complaints that people are shipping too many things to a house, or they got clients that come in and out, um, and we realize that they're actually using a commercial business, we have a way of enforcing that through code enforcement, so, I, I'm poking too much on that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I would tend to, I would tend to agree that, um, this may not be the way to, you know, regulate that, because, I mean, what's the difference if somebody owning three or four cars that live in one house? Okay, well, you know, you're trying to control parking with something that has nothing to do with parking, you're trying to control, um, you know, having a stove in a, in a residence, well, I could get a hot plate and a, you know, and use a, uh, what do they call those little oven things, uh, you know, I mean, it, it, it doesn't, it, it's, it, I don't feel like what we're doing here is tackling the real issue at hand if that's what we're trying to regulate, because I can do a hot plate all day long somewhere, and I don't need a range, I can do a toaster oven, and I don't need an oven, um, so it, it doesn't really matter, or I can own, I personally could own three or four cars, and my wife has two cars, that doesn't solve the parking issue. So, I, I don't know, I would rather see something on a, a square footage piece or something like that, that would eliminate or drastically reduce the amount of people that are living in, in that, that, that quarters, um, but I think just naturally, by the way that city has developed, most people don't have the yard to put in a second, um, living quarters, um, there's, you probably find very few areas, um, that have enough yard to put in a, a, a mother-in-law quarters or something like that. So, I, I, I don't know, I, I don't, I think maybe we might be overthinking this a little bit too much.
Yeah, uh, let me just suggest that we allow this to, allow this to move forward, because it does loosen up even more stringent requirements on the mother-in-law suites or secondary facilities, so I don't want to say no to this and allow something that is currently in place that's far more restrictive to remain, uh, but I do think that maybe we have, uh, planning and zoning, uh, discuss this at a future, uh, a, a future meeting to see if there's a more direct way to tackle this than trying to get, get it through, um, uh, through planning. I, I don't think, I, I don't think it's planning's job, as competent as I know Martin and his team to be, I, I don't think it's their job to essentially be the code enforcement aspect of something, uh, preemptively, so, um, I'll, I'll support it for now, but I, I want it revisited.
Uh, the other thing that I wanted to do, Member Perez, is touch on the banner ad issue, uh, if I may, um, so, uh, when you have banners across the right-of-way, uh, typically people can get a permit, uh, file for a permit to do that, the city would review it, uh, limiting it to certain organizations can create First Amendment issues for the city, so if, if the city is a cosponsor in the event, and that's normally what ends up happening, uh, we can regulate our own speech, there's no problem with the city regulating its own speech, and as a, a cosponsor to the event, we are able to put it over our right-of-way, and of course, if we put it over our right-of-way, we're going to make sure that it doesn't cause any traffic issues. Uh, but if other organizations attempt to do that, um, especially after, uh, about five years ago, the Reed case that came out there, um, you know, if, if you're going to allow it for a nonprofit entity, you would also have to allow it for, or you may also have to allow it for commercial enterprises, uh, otherwise you're basing your regulation on the content. Um, so, I, I, I think that maybe that might be why we saw less permits for that type of thing, um, uh, we'd have to go back and search the archives and see if we had issues with the banners that were being put there, uh, but just, uh, just from a legal perspective, if you said, hey, I wanted to let nonprofits and organizations put these types of signs up, but not other people, uh, I would say that could create an issue for us from a First Amendment context.
Yeah, I'd like clarification, because I, I don't, I certainly don't want it to be a free-for-all, if it's our public right-of-way, certainly, by default, we're, we're, um, uh, we're a cosponsor, it's, it's essentially in our property, uh, at least the property we steward, so, um, but I do want to give us an opportunity to allow for, uh, cheap and readily available advertising for some of the charities that I know, um, could use it, uh, and we don't have the ability, we, we limit the ability for them to do it with, um, uh, with the, um, uh, the typical signage, uh, which is what we use for political events and what some churches use, and we allow that, we allow realtors to use it, but we don't allow charities to be able to put in some, um, uh, you know, uh, four-by-fours or eight-by-four signs, uh, to advertise their charitable events, that's, I know that's legalized, so maybe there's, um, maybe there's some halfway point between that, um, uh, I've gone on too much about this, but maybe, uh, Lawrence, if you can provide some clarification on what maybe we, we would allow, we, we would be allowed to do to offer some assistance to charities for cheap advertisement.
Does that complete your comments?
Uh, Mayor, just wanted to let you know that Councilmember Little is now in the meeting as well.
Okay, good, thank you, thank you, sir. Uh, Councilmember Moore, you have your comments on this?
Mayor, I, I'll, uh, yield on this, I, I would like to bring back, uh, an agenda item to talk a little bit further in depth on some of those, um, those, specifically those two issues that Member Perez brought up, so I'll, I'll wait and, uh, we'll bring this back and hash it out, then I don't want to hold this up for, for now.
Okay, good, Councilmember Owens?
No comment at this time, Mayor, thank you.
Good, good, fine, thank you, thank you. Uh, moving to the next phase, Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Chairman, this is for, uh, staff discussion.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, yes?
Thank you, Mayor, commi- Commissioners? Henry, do you have any comments or questions?
No, ma'am, not at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any at this time, Allison.
Thank you, Mr. Wicker.
Do you have any comments?
Thank you, Andrew, what about, uh, Commissioner Dansby?
Uh, no comments at this time, thank you.
The only thing I wanted to say is, on number three, um, I, I also found the wording that a restroom is a room with a wash basin and a toilet interesting, I mean, that's just a room with a sink and a toilet, um, so the, does that mean it can't have a shower or a tub?
No, that description was meant as a minimum.
Thank you. That's, that's all I wanted to know, thank you so much.
Complete the Planning Commission?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor.
Moving to staff discussion, uh, at this, at this forum. Martin?
Mayor, I, I think we, uh, have interjected and have discussed, uh, this item enough, uh, we'll let the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, review it at their meeting, and we'll bring it back for, uh, city council discussion in August.
Okay, this is a planning and discussion issue primarily, and because of that, uh, moving to item number se- uh, six, let me adjourn this particular, let me see what we said here, it's a, a, a joint public me- meeting. And in light manner, I'd like to open a joint special meeting, City Council, City of Pearland, and the Planning and Zoning Commission, City of Pearland, on Monday, July the 20th, 2020, at 6:30, at, at least, 6:30 was the original start time, and we're conducting this meeting with telephone and video conferencing. Uh, calling to order, roll call of the City Council, City of Pearland, we have just completed a, a series of, uh,